The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular town council meeting. Today is Monday, June 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Before we begin, I'll ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and it will be led by Councilman Rocco.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we serve. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So we do have a presentation this evening, which we're pretty happy about. We're always excited to have Plainville students come and visit with us, and we get to meet them because they've done some special work here. And this evening, we're going to have our Memorial Day essay winners present their essays, and I think that's a remarkable thing. So congratulations ahead of time to those who won and who are here this evening. I would also like to add, before we begin, that Mr. Dudek, who is Chair of the Veterans -- he's actually Chair of the Memorial Day Parade Committee, could not be here tonight. And he sends his best wishes. He wishes he could be here to say a few words about each one of you. But he asked that I would congratulate you once again on his behalf. I know he was at the end of the culmination of the memorial services on Memorial Day. And so he does send his best wishes and says, regrettably, he has been elsewhere. So congratulations from Mr. Dudek. So with that, I will -- I'm not sure if there's a particular order that you are going to go in, but I'm going to ask that one of the student -- Robert, do we have an order of presentation?
There's a list.
I'm going to look for my list, just a moment.
Yes, under -- I can read them off if you want. The living.
Oh, I have it. Thank you. I've got it. I found it. Thank you. So the first person we have on our list is Eliza Lopez from Linden Street. Would you like to come up and come right to the microphone? And you could read your essay for us? You can -- yeah, absolutely.
When you see the last Monday of May on your calendar, say, "Woo-hoo, three-day weekend." But have you ever wondered why we have that three-day weekend? Memorial Day isn't a day that gives you a three-day weekend. To me, it's so much more than that. Think, have you ever had a family member serve in the military and die during war? That's what Memorial Day is all about, to honor the family member who died serving the country they love. Let me teach you what Memorial Day is all about. What do you hear in the world "memorial," "memory"? Memorial Day is to remember all those people who gave their lives to help ours. At first, it was a day to honor people who died during the Civil War. Now it honors everyone who died giving their lives to this country. Memorial Day was once called Decoration Day. In fact, every country or continent has a Memorial Day. Even Australia, it's called Enzac Day. Decoration Day was established in 1869, but Memorial Day was established in 1971. Pretty cool, huh? Have you ever wondered how to celebrate Memorial Day and honor past soldiers? One way you can celebrate Memorial Day is by going to the cemetery and putting flags on fallen soldiers. Another way is by going to the Memorial Day Parade. You can even be in the parade. There might be a float that lets kids or people in the parade. Parades are in every city, in the state, or even country. Did you know that they used to put red flowers on fallen soldiers called poppies? I think some people might still be there today. So we put poppies as an accessory to honor all fallen soldiers. In conclusion, Memorial Day is one of the most honorable holidays in the world, and everyone celebrates it. It shall not be forgotten. To me, it means praying for the people who died fighting for our country. It's not about shopping or swimming at the beach or pool. It's about honoring fallen soldiers. What does Memorial Day mean to you, and how do you celebrate it? I hope you have learned a lot about this holiday called Memorial Day.
Thank you, Eliza. That was great work. We appreciate that. Next on our list is Madeline Davenport from Tofflon School. Madeline?
Memorial Day is my favorite time of the year. It has been a big part of my life since I was little. Every year, I always participate in the Memorial Day Parade. I march for Little League and for all the veterans in my family that are alive and for those that have sadly passed away. But this year, we can't have the parade because of COVID. I wrote this essay to show how much Memorial Day still means to me. Every year, when I go to the parade, I have my softball jersey on and a bag of candy to give out to people. I love tossing the candy to the little kids and also the elderly. I walk the Veterans Memorial and see the names of those people who have sacrificed so much for all of us. I feel like they are superheroes. They went away from our families. They sacrificed their own lives for our freedom. There are so many people that I personally know that I have actually come to pass Memorial Day celebrations here in Plainville. I have several family members that I'm proud to say have served and fought. My grandfather, Timothy Davenport, served in the Air Force for four years and fought in Vietnam. My great-grandfather, Charles Davenport, served in the Army for six years and fought in World War II. My great-uncle, David Davenport, served in the Air Force for 23 years. My cousin, David Lombardo, served in the Marines for several years. I also have a number of other family members that were in the military. Most recently, my family celebrated my cousins Trevor and Tanner Bloom for completing boot camp and joining the Army. As you can tell, my family has a long history of serving our country in the armed forces. I just don't want people to forget the sacrifice that others have made for our freedom. Veterans sacrifice their lives for us, and we have to appreciate what they have done for our future. I thought about serving in the Army when I get older. I think it would be great to be the first family in my family that would serve our country. It'd also be such an honor to do it all. At the end of the speeches, while we are standing at the memorial, my family and I go up to the veterans at the end of their speech, and we say, "Thank you for your service. We appreciate what you have done for us." We should all remember to say thank you to our veterans.
Great. Thank you, Madeline. Great job. Next, we have Eliana Rexinger-McConnell from Whaler School. Is Eliana here? Okay. We applaud her efforts, even though she wasn't here. I know she was at the service at the memorial park, so understood. So then we have Sadie Braun from the middle school. Sadie?
Memorial Day has been around for a long time. It has gone through many changes throughout the years, but has always served the same purpose. It reminds us of the great sacrifices that brave men and women make when they join the military, not for themselves, but for our country as a whole. Memorial Day has a lot of history packed into its past. On May 5th, 1868, a team of military leaders created a day to remember what the military has done for our country and to thank the soldiers for fighting so hard. This day was called Decoration Day. On Decoration Day, citizens around the country recall and respect their friends or family that fought and passed in a battle. I myself know and respect many people who are in the military. My stepfather, Brian Zimudio, has fought overseas in Afghanistan. My stepbrother, Christian Zimudio, is a member of the Coast Guard and is currently deployed. Having such a large military presence in my life has let me look at holidays like Memorial Day through a different lens. I have limitless respect for people who joined the military and always will. On days like Memorial Day, I take a second to think about those who were not as fortunate and did not survive their battle or fight. Those people will forever be remembered in our hearts and minds. Memorial Day is very important to me. I support and respect our military a lot. Their selfless sacrifices are just another part of what makes America a great, strong, and fearless nation.
Great. Thank you so much. You were doing so well. I thought you were going to keep going. Very well done. I want to thank all of the families for coming here tonight. It is certainly a pleasure to get to see you up close. I saw you at the park. But it's always a joy to have our students come into the council and do your presentations for us. So once again, congratulations on winning the essay contest. You've all done a wonderful job coming here tonight, and we really do appreciate you taking that time. So thanks again. We appreciate it. Now, I'm just going to mention to your parents, you can stay for the rest of our meeting. However, if there's something else that you'd be doing this evening, please feel free. We'll just take a moment if you'd like to go. So it's up to you. You can stay if you'd like. Okay. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. And we have a couple of items here. And I will at this time ask the town clerk to please read the notice for us.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 21st, 2021, in the municipal center to consider, one, a proposed ordinance entitled, Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfers for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2021; and, two, an additional appropriation of $135,000 from unassigned fund balance. Copies of said proposed ordinance and appropriation are available for public inspection in the office of the town clerk, dated at Plainville this 17th day of June.
Thank you, Cindy. So as you have heard, we have two public hearings this evening. I will ask for comment on them separately. The first one is a proposed ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfer for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2021. I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on that? Anybody wish to speak? Last chance. Okay. Thank you. I'll close that one. And for the second part of our public hearing, we are looking for an additional appropriation of $135,000 from unassigned fund balance. Does anybody wish to speak to that section of the public hearing? Anybody wish to speak? Okay. All right. I'll close the public hearing. And moving on, item number three, minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to accept the minutes of June 7th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second at motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements and reports tonight?
Madam Chair?
Rosemary.
I know.
Your monthly contribution. I look forward to it.
After our last meeting, I did attend meetings of the three groups to which I am the liaison. On that Tuesday night, I attended the Library Board of Trustees meeting. And just a couple of highlights, summer programs have been announced, and of course, it's focused on children and teens in particular. And it's a real mixture of some onsite programs, usually held outdoors, virtual, and grab-and-go kits and that sort of thing. The other thing that they are doing is resuming full weekday hours beginning in July. One change, however, is going to be that the opening time will go a little bit earlier, to 9:00 AM, and then they'll be closing at 8:00 PM. It's really based on input that they've received from patrons over the years that really wanted an earlier opening time. They also voted on the naming of the Youth Services Room for Betty Bokus, and I know that Town Manager Lee will be reporting on that in a little while. Attended the Conservation Commission on the Wednesday night, and there was a report on the walk that was done during the month of May at Pateroski Pond with Town Manager Lee and other town staff. And also, the follow-up work that was done by the town after that work, and that was much appreciated. They sponsored a successful hike on National Trails Days. And elected officers, re-elected are Marge Burr's Chair, Jeff Sepko Vice Chair, and Randall Paz as Secretary. Committee on Aging, the Senior Center is also adding a lot more in-person activities, or a combination of in-person and hybrids. So some exercise classes, for example, you can either do in-person or can do them remotely. The Health Fair is being held on July 20th and next Tuesday, June 29th, at 2:00 PM. They're going to be celebrating the award that they received from United Way for their innovative work during COVID. And that's it.
Okay. Rosemary, will the Senior Center be open beginning July for fall operation? Or is there going to be a scaled-back version of some of the things that they used to offer there?
There's still some scaled back, some of the trips, for example.
Yep.
And they are going to be having a meeting about trips and getting people's input on that. And some things, you know, will still be done virtually. I don't want to say for, you know --
Sure.
You know, I want to be very careful. I don't know if it's 100%, but it's getting back there.
It's closer to that. I had, yeah, I had a question regarding pool playing. There were a number of people that were interested in playing pool.
You know, I honestly don't know.
You don't know?
Would rather not say because I don't know.
Okay. So anybody that needs that information can check with the Senior Center? They'll be able to give them information about --
They should. But they're adding, you know, more and more in-person activities.
Okay. Good. Thanks for that. All right. Anybody else have any reports to announce tonight? I just have one item that I'd like to share with you. I was invited to attend the graduation of Plainville High School, class of 2021, which I was so happy to do. And I spoke briefly because everybody likes you not to take up too much time during those particular events, as students want to get off with their families and celebrate. But I did send our greeting, and I also read a proclamation from the Town Council for the class of 2021. It turned out to be a beautiful evening. It was held outside, and they felt really good about being back to where they wanted to be in terms of celebrating those big events. So it worked out well, and I sent them all your clapping and cheers. So it was a good night. If there are no other reports tonight, we will move on to appointments and resignations. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify the town manager's acceptance of the resignation of John Christopher Detola from the Advisory, Recreation, and Park Board.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify the town manager's appointment of Mary Tully, 214 Broad Street, to the Advisory, Recreation, and Park Board for the term ending May 1st, 2025.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Keep going.
Motion to ratify the town manager's reappointment of Donna Martin to the Advisory, Recreation, and Park Board for the term ending May 1st, 2025.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And last one?
Motion to ratify the town manager's reappointment of Brent Davenport to the Advisory, Recreation, and Park Board for the term ending May 1st, 2025.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any other appointments tonight that may not have been on our list? None? Okay. There's some we're going to catch up on at our next meeting. I think I said that before. There's a few outstanding from January and on some of the other boards and commissions. So if you could take a quick peek, if they're in our packet. Next time, we'll take care of those and just clean it up so that we're all up to speed as to what we want to do.
I'm also anticipating another resignation from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I have an appointment with an interested person to fill that position as well.
Okay. So that would be in our --
At your July meeting.
July meeting. Okay. Thank you very much. Lot of movement over there on that board. All right. If there are no others. Item six, there is no representative, report of the town attorney? Do we have a report this evening for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just one issue regarding the tax auction discussion. It's number two on the report of the town manager, and number three under new business. Attorney Mastriani is recommending that number 12 on the tax sale list be removed. It's property 105 New Britain Avenue. Attorney Mastriani was able to confirm with Attorney Gelsky that the property is under contract for sale, and that closing is going to occur in early July of 2021. So the taxes would be paid out of that transaction, and therefore, we wouldn't need to send that property for a tax auction.
Okay. So when we do make that motion, we're going to exclude that particular property? We don't need to do them separately? We'll just exclude that one from the group that we were given? Does that work? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for that. Anything else? You're all set?
Yes. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have several items, the first of which is the Engineering Excellence Award, the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Removal Upgrade Project. A week ago Monday, the American Council of Consulting Engineers presented an Engineering Excellence Award to Ty &amp; Bond for their design of the phosphorus removal system at the Plainville Water Pollution Control Facility. In presenting the award, the consulting engineers pointed out that Ty &amp; Bond designed an effective approach to phosphorus removal, that they exceeded Plainville's needs by assisting in securing grants for the construction, and they completed the project on time and under budget. The design also meets all state and federal environmental regulations and ensures the protection of the Paquabic River and Long Island Sound. Town staff congratulates Ty &amp; Bond for achieving the American Council of Consulting Engineers Engineering Excellence Award and for assisting the town of Plainville in a successful completion of the phosphorus removal project.
Very nice.
It was a nice event, and I was glad to attend. Next item I have, which was referenced under the town attorney's report, is the tax auction discussion. Town staff and town attorney are recommending, I guess, 31 delinquent real estate accounts be submitted for tax auction. A copy of the proposed list was included in the meeting information packages. A tax sale policy was adopted by the Town Council on September 16th, 2013. The policy states that no account will proceed to a tax auction without approval by the Town Council. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. Next item I have is some information with respect to GoNetSpeed, high-speed fiber internet provider. Town staff recently met with representatives from GoNetSpeed. GoNetSpeed is a high-speed fiber-to-the-home internet provider. They reviewed their plans to expand their network into Plainville beginning in early August. GoNetSpeed plans to offer Plainville residents and businesses a starting bandwidth of 150 megabits per second for a flat rate of $50 per month, which will allow for items like streaming, downloading, surfing, and gaming needs. Faster bandwidths will also be available. Their selling point is that customers will have direct access to 100% fiber connectivity without bandwidth caps or throttling, extra fees, or taxes, and with no contract required. They're expected to begin in the southern end of Plainville and work their way north. The GoNetSpeed service will be available to residents shortly after the fiber is installed on their street. So it won't be until the whole system is installed. As they do a certain section of town, they said, you know, basically somewhere around 800 to 1,000 homes, it will begin to solicit people who may be interested in connecting to it. They are expected to complete the installation by the end of fall. More information regarding GoNetSpeed can be found on their webpage at www.gonetspeed, all one word, go netspeed.com. Next item I have is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Public Information Session, which is a virtual meeting to be held June 22nd, which is tomorrow. The Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Virtual Public Information Meeting, conducted by the State Department of Transportation, will be held tomorrow evening, June 22nd, beginning at 7:00 PM. Interested persons can join the virtual public information meeting via MS Teams Live Event or through the YouTube Project Channel. The link to view via each of these platforms can be found on our webpage. So there's a link to it. And you could also go to the Connecticut DOT webpage as well. But there's a link to that page on the town webpage. Persons could also provide comments via email. The project email address is dotproject109-173@ct.gov. Voicemail comments can also be made by calling 860-944-1111. The public comment period is open through Wednesday, July 7th, 2021. So if you're not able to make comments tomorrow evening, the comment period is open until July 7th. Finally, persons with limited internet access will be able to call to listen to the presentation toll-free by calling 888-949-2798 and entering a participant code of 1591603. You didn't have an opportunity to write that down as I was speaking. Again, that's all on the town webpage as well.
So Robert, just as clarification, this presentation is not a public hearing. However, if folks have a desire to contact them, the DOT, they can do it via voicemail or email, but this is not a public participation, public hearing. It's just a presentation for --
No, people will be able to ask questions during the public hearing, but they have to submit them online. They have to submit them in, you know, you're not -- So there's a chat box. You can ask your question. They'll read the question and then answer the question.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So they will respond to comments and questions that are brought up during the public information session.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
All right. Next item I have is the Library Board of Trustees' Recommendation Regarding the Renaming of the Youth Services Room. And as you heard earlier, during announcements at the Library Board of Trustees meeting held on June 8th, they unanimously voted to name the Youth Services Room in memory of Elizabeth Betty Bokus. They also suggested that the dedication ceremony should be held after the summer months, to be held on Friday, September 17th, beginning at 5:00 PM. Y5, that's when the library closes on Friday. Thought that'd be a good time to have it. And there is an item under new business regarding this recommendation to name the Youth Services Room at the Plainville Public Library in memory of Elizabeth Betty Bokus. Not sure that many people remember the fact that Betty was actually named legislator of the year, I believe, in 1992 or '93 by the public, by the Library, State Library Association. So she had an affinity for the library, specifically the Plainville Public Library did a lot of volunteer hours there as well. And they are recommending she be recognized for that. Next item I have is a COVID-19 update. At last Thursday, as of last Thursday, all but one municipality in the state are now below five cases per 100,000 persons testing positive for COVID-19. The town of Bolton is the only town above the five per 100K at 7.3 per 100K, putting them in the yellow category. The overall positivity rate for the state now stands at 0.30%. So that's a very low percentage. I was on a call this morning last week. I think we had 11 people in the district. The district includes Plainville, Suddington, and Middlefield that had tested positive for COVID. This week, it was 14, so it's, you know, staying low. And I think two or three of those were from the same family, you know, same household. So according to Shane Lockwood, our Director of Health, he feels that we're in very good shape here in the region, as well as in Connecticut. And he's not expecting that, I'm not anticipating that anything close to what we've had in the past will crop up going forward either. Next item I have is the financial dashboard, and that's for the first 11 months of the fiscal year. And that was included in the meeting information package and was posted on the town website. I'll go through some of the highlights at this time. Our expenditures, we spent 87% of our budget. And that includes, you know, the council during that time has made about $1 million in additional appropriations. We spent about 87% of our budget. Two-year average is about 85%. I'm still expecting us to be somewhere around, you know, a little bit less than 100% when all is said and done. And that's mostly because of the next two categories. One is the general government budget. We spent 90%, probably close to 91%. Our two-year average is 92.68%. So we're running, you know, a little bit lower on the general government side. And on the Board of Ed's side, we've spent 84%, 85%. Their two-year average is about 80%. But I know that, are we expecting them to go over 100% at this point in time? The Board of Ed, yeah?
There'll be a return.
There'll be a return from the Board of Ed as well. So it's the other two items, you know, mostly in capital, where we've transferred dollars 100%. And, you know, and in debt service, we're expecting to, you know, make that transfer too. So those are the ones that are bringing our percent spent up a little bit above our two-year average at this point in time. We expect to finish the year under our expenditures. Police overtime, this month, we've spent 100%. That's why we have an additional appropriation. Our, you are about $55,000, you know, over budget right now. That's why we have an additional appropriation. Our, you're about $55,000, you know, over budget right now. Excuse me, over our two-year average. We're at 100% as far as our budget is concerned. And we're expecting, we're asking for an additional appropriation of 135. We think that, you know, we're trying to be conservative on that number, so we expect our, at 100% will be, you know, less than 135,000. But we won't know that till after the fiscal year is over. As far as roadways overtime, buildings and grounds overtime, those are trending, you know, similar to previous months in roadway snow and roadways and buildings and grounds snow. No change from previous. We don't expect any change in June either, so. As far as our municipal solid waste, we've, through the end of May, have delivered to Bristol approximately 5,600 tons. Two-year average is 52, 52 and a half tons, 5,252 tons. That represents approximately $22,000 to date above what our budget is. So we expect to run above as far as our municipal solid waste is concerned. That's the bad news. The good news is we expect to be under budget as far as our recycling is concerned. Our recycling is trending pretty close to what it was last year. However, the tip fee is significantly lower than what we had budgeted. So we expect there's going to be a savings in recycling. I'm estimating somewhere around $25,000. On the revenue side, all revenues, we've collected almost 101% of what we budgeted for all revenues. And that, what that means is we've collected a little bit over $600,000 more than what we budgeted, and that does not include, that number does not include grants from municipal projects, which generally comes in in late June, which is another $541,000. So we're expecting revenues to come in a little bit over $1.1 million higher than what we had budgeted. As far as current taxes are concerned, we've received 100.59% of what we budgeted. That's a difference of $283,000, $284,000. Two-year average is 100.01%. So we're running a little bit ahead of what we have in past years as well. The only change in the unassigned fund balance at this point in time is the council did make an additional appropriation of $43,431 for the police body camera. So that brought our anticipated unassigned fund balance down to 14.45% at this point in time, a little bit over $9 million. Next item is our special funds, recreation fund. You know, that's a little bit skewed because of not being able to present programs. We're looking to see if we can get some COVID, excuse me, American Rescue Plan dollars to help backfill that, although revenues are down, but so are expenditures, so. So, you know, that's not as bad as it may seem otherwise. Robertson Airport, we're running a fund balance of about $376,000 at this point in time. Nothing unexpected as far as that's concerned. Water Push Control Facilities budget, we are running behind previous years. Part of that is because we've, we've, I guess, we've released some encumbrances. Generally, Joe encumbers some dollars and releases them a little bit earlier. Then he might otherwise, he doesn't see where he's going to need the money. So we're running a little bit behind on expenditures, you know, which is good news. On the revenue side, we've collected a little bit over 100% of what we budgeted. Our two-year average is about 102, so pretty much where we expected to be as far as revenues on water push control. And as far as the library is concerned, expenditures are running a little bit under the two-year average. We've spent 80%. Two-year average is 83.1%. On the revenue side, we've collected more revenue. Part of that has to do with endowment surplus of about $116,000 compared to what we had budgeted for that. A lot of that had to do with a changeover from Wells Fargo to RBC. That got held up in terms of the revenues we got last year, so some of the catch-up happened this year, so. As far as major projects, we've spent about $642,000 in road bond. It's part of the road bond project in the spring. Paid for it in May. We've still got a significant balance in that account over the next, you know, three years to spend that. And the phosphorus removal project, a small expenditure of $14,000, we're still coming in on the budget as far as that's concerned. No other expenditures in either the Wheeler School Project or the turf maintenance fund. And that's all I have under, under the dashboard. I'll turn it over to Matt for happenings, and then we'll be available for any questions you may have for us.
Good evening. Thank you through you, town manager and council chairperson. I have several items for this evening. Maybe I'll be a little louder or be part of it. The first one is related to revenues. The tax bills will be going out next week for the July 1 due date, 30 days to pay without interest. They will be available to pay online beginning July 1st at the town website, and that's plainvillesct.com. The revenue collection office is also working through personal property and motor vehicle delinquent taxes, so individuals may have seen notices in regards to that. And the tax sale process is beginning as you have a later business item on. Additionally, Plainville Unites, a celebration and conversation about diversity and inclusion, is being hosted in Norton Park tomorrow evening from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. It will be at the Band Shell. The event is free. No advanced registration or tickets are required. A rain date is Wednesday, June 30th, same time. And the program is organized by the Plainville Anti-Racism Task Force, sponsored by Plainville Youth Services, Plainville Public Library, Plainville Recreation, the Town Council, and Wheeler Regional YMCA. Further information is available on the town website as well. And finally, several senior center happenings. As may have been previously mentioned, the United Way Celebration of the Plainville Senior Center as a Changemaker Award at their 19th Annual Community Builders Reception is tomorrow evening. There are opportunities to watch at the senior center and join that celebration as well as live. Further information is available from the senior center and on the town website, plainvillesct.com. There's a skin cancer screening scheduled for Monday, June 28th, 3:30 to 5:00 PM. They'll conduct a free skin cancer screening. If you're concerned about a spot on your skin, call the senior center to make an appointment and get checked out. And finally, All About Advanced Directives, What Are They and Why You Need Them, is being sponsored as a presentation by the Greater Hartford Legal Aid. It's in-person and Zoom, June 29th at 11:00 AM. They'll discuss what an advanced directive is and information that individuals may need for that. Other programs are available on the town website, and with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
This was also a copy of the plaque that we received as part of that excellence award, and we'll make sure it gets probably prominently displayed perhaps at the Waste Water Treatment Plan.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Russ Mary, go ahead.
Yes, the event at the park, being sponsored by the Anti-Racism Task Force, is going to be on, not tomorrow, but next Tuesday, the 29th, so, yeah.
I apologize for my misreading.
Just thought, in case. Thank you.
Okay. Robert, I have a question or perhaps a little discussion point regarding the senior center receiving the award, their recognition for all the work that they did. Can we, as the town council, send a letter also acknowledging that we appreciate, that they have been recognized, first of all, and we certainly know that they've gone through a lot trying to keep people well and in contact during the last 18 months or so? So is it possible that we could have a letter created?
Yes.
From the council?
Yes.
To know that we are very proud of the work they do, and we appreciate the fact they're being recognized by their peers as well?
Will do.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the report from Robert or Matt for his report? Okay, we'll move along. We are now in the public comment section of our meeting. During this time, we welcome members of the public to please come to the podium. We have one with a microphone. Please state your name and address. If you wish to speak to the council, you will be given three minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak? Mr. Kessel.
John Kessel, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. Good evening, town council and Robert.
Good evening.
I asked Chairwoman Pagliisi to relay to the rest of the council my support for Lieutenant Peterson in his quest for police chief in Plainville. But I figured it'd be better if I come here and talk to you about it in person. I've met Lieutenant Peterson. I had discussions with him. And to me, he's a person that can really deal with the public. I mean, he's just like the chief. He's been serving under the chief for all these years. Him and Lieutenant Mullins have worked together great, and as far as I know, with them running the department now, the two lieutenants are doing a great job. And there's things about considering a change with the way times are. You have all this anti-police movement and defund police. And there's several towns in the state of Connecticut are already having problems with their chiefs with morale and stuff. Plainville lost their chief and they lost an officer. And, you know, that can't be great for their morale either. And I think, in my opinion, you shouldn't change in the middle of the stream now. This, the times are too tough for, to bring in somebody from the outside to try to take over and run this department. I don't think they can do it. The way the chief ran it, I mean, you know, he was chief of the year, you know? We've got awards, and Mullins and Peterson are under him. I think they'd make an excellent team, and I want to urge this council, give, if he needs extra points for all he's done for the town, his years of service, I'd appreciate it if you'd really consider him to be the next chief. I think he's more than qualified, and I think we really should stay in-house at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir?
I'm Zachary Ferguson, 40 Atherton Terrace. So a few weeks back, I came and I made a statement on regards to the Kyle Fasold case. And not everybody was here, but it's on regards to the lawsuit that was counter-filed against the victims' families. And I guess the main question I wanted to ask was, did the town council know that this lawsuit was actually happening?
No, I did not. I wasn't aware of that particular piece of action.
Right.
We knew that the town was being sued by various anonymous parties, of course.
Victims, yeah, the victims.
I did not have additional information in regard to the details of what's happening.
That's good. That was the premise of me coming last time, was to kind of set that record and kind of let everyone know here all at the same time that that was what was going on. So this time, due to lack of action, I felt this time maybe we tried something a little bit different. So I contacted a number of media outlets and have addressed them, and a few have showed interest in the case itself. So at this time, I figured it's best for me to, once again, say my statement for when they watch this video afterwards. So I'm going to go ahead and I'll read my statement again, and then I'll, for anyone here, hand out any of the statements again in case you want another copy of it, so. As a parent, raising a family here in Plainville, I was appalled at what I've read on the CT Judicial Website. There are multiple lawsuits filed against the town of Plainville involving the youth swimmers being victims of the Kyle Fasold Plainville Blue Dolphins Child Pornography Investigation. That's, right off the rip. Not only is this awful for these families and their, for these victims and their families to deal with the trauma of the situation, but then to learn that the town had knowledge is unacceptable. According to the lawsuits filed, town employees did not correctly do their jobs in protecting the children while at the pool. Employees are listed as having knowledge and choosing to do nothing about it. So this is what shocked me, is to find out that not only did these things happen, but they happened for a duration of time, and the town at this point is not taking accountability for it. And when the victims want reformation for what happened, they sue against them. I'll leave it at that. I have more time?
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay.
If you still have more.
So I guess this is just what we're going to keep doing. Coming here, as many town meetings as we have to, until we get the point across that this is happening. Not only is the town not taking responsibility, but they're choosing to specifically sue these families and the victims of these families. Kids lost scholarships for this. So I'll go ahead and I'll hand out this again for any of you who would like a copy of the statement. And I'll take my seat.
Yeah, we'll take that. Just as a point of information, there is a, because it's a pending lawsuit, the council really cannot comment on any of this. You know that, right?
No, no, yeah, like I said, this was here for not only, all that's on the same page, but for, to get it out there to the media outlets.
Well, just so that, I mean, the public needs to understand also that the town council is aware of information that we have received. However, this is an ongoing, very sensitive lawsuit that we are, we are in no way allowed to comment on or make a sort of public statement about.
Right, right, right. No, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that there's a counter lawsuit going on against the victims.
Well, you know, it's not that simple. I would point out that the, what you've read is allegations, not facts. So, you know, that will come out whether town employees knew about it or not. Those are allegations.
So if this does come to like to a head and everything is resolved, the town will take responsibility at that time, you're saying?
The town will take, the town will take whatever appropriate action there is as a result of the court results.
So the pending lawsuit against the victims is...
The pending lawsuit is not, it's not a pending lawsuit. It's a motion for apportionment, okay? That's not necessarily a lawsuit. It doesn't hold them personally responsible or anything. It's a, it's a, it's a legal procedure with regards to apportionment of damages if they're awarded.
And what's the town trying to get out of that?
The town is trying to minimize the impact if we're found liable for the damage.
So if the town's found liable, what they're going to try to do now is to avoid the black eye as long as they can until they're held accountable?
It's not that simple. I could talk to you after the meeting, but, you know.
Yeah, you said this to me last time when we walked out afterwards, and I didn't want to talk to you then, and I don't want to talk to you now. It has nothing to do with...
That's fine. I'm just saying.
Not personally. It's nothing to do with that.
I understand. I'm just saying that you're, the way you're categorizing it is not correct with regards to suing the parents association.
Okay.
It's a motion for apportionment, and you might want to educate yourself about what that means.
All right, and I'm glad to educate all of you from the last statement, and I'm glad to educate everyone who's going to watch this later on. And I'm glad everyone, I'm glad they're all educated.
The council understands what motion for apportionment is.
Okay, and I'm glad they understand that they're being sued, because last time, under your actual words, the town last time was well aware that this was going on, and they just responded to me by saying that they didn't. So I'm going to go ahead and take what you said.
The town council was not aware when it was, when it was actually done by the attorneys representing the town, which is through the insurance company. They have the authority to do that. They didn't find out about it after it happened.
Right.
And that's what I was, that's what I was referring to.
What I'm saying is like, I made that statement to inform them, because apparently it wasn't said prior to me making the statement. So I'll keep making the statement.
The council knows the timing on it.
Yeah, I'm glad they know. All right, thank you for your time.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I'm here tonight to, in lieu of the virtual meeting tomorrow, which, if you don't have all the fancy equipment, the Zoom and this and that, you might get squeezed out of being able to say anything, but at least I can say it tonight. And I want to say that I strongly oppose Alignment C. It's totally unacceptable. It shouldn't be. It's not going to do Plainville any good. All it is, is going to be trouble. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we're coming into 4th of July, and I really fear for this great, great land. God bless America. Wake up, America, because we have a scourge that's slowly creeping across this great land called Marxism. And unfortunately, what we have... And unfortunately, what we have in Washington, I've renamed them the demonic rats, are trying to pull the good people of the United States down into their mire of muck. And it's deplorable. And I want to bring to your attention a great man that has written a wonderful book. It's going to be out in July. I know it's going to be a great book. It's going to be his best. It's called "American Marxism" by Mark Levin. He has a show daily on radio. He has a show on Fox News on Sunday night at 8 o'clock, and I'm sure he has other things going, too. So, he's worth listening to. And I fear for what's going to be happening to us. And the border continues to be a freaking mess. Just absolutely the worst. I can't understand why they've let it get so bad. But I can understand, I mean, they want votes, but we've got crime. The cartels, the cartels are streaming over the border with their drugs. This is death to so many. So, we all have to fight. Remember the great words of the Battle Hymn of the Republic, please? That's such a great hymn. It's like, we need to go to war. The good people of the United States of America need to go to war. The third verse, just one little half-second, the third verse of that great song is, "He has sounded forth the trumpet that shall never call retreat. He is sifting out the hearts of men before his judgment seat. Oh, be swift, my soul, to answer him; be jubilant, my feet. Our God is marching on. God, I hope he protects us. Glory, glory, hallelujah." Remember that for the 4th of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. This time, I wrote some stuff down. What I'm talking here is, I am, I'm mentioning, I'm disappointed that the first Canal Heritage Trail meeting will be virtual. There are town residents that approve of the trail, some do not approve, and others that just don't care one way or the other. I, for one, have a concern regarding computer knowledge and correctly responding to information given. Perhaps there are more residents like myself that are in this situation, and that's meaning to comply to this when you're on the computer. In fact, if I can just briefly slide off a little bit, as the meeting progressed, the Town Manager mentioned how we'd be able to contact tomorrow at the meeting and all that. And I was sitting in the back of the room, getting confused even there, so that's me. I'm not going to speak for anybody else. Examples that I think are important when you have it person-to-person as opposed to computers, which I'm not disregarding computers, but one of them is, the first is the price tag that needs a little explanation. When you start talking money, that being that, that being that we are talking, the state payments being, this is an example. I believe it said in the paper, $421,000 for the trail. And I think that was a Plainville citizen, the article. My question would be, what happens if that amount is not sufficient? Who picks up the tab after the $426,000? That's one thing. The next item I'd like to point out is seeing the complete map showing the ability to better question and understand what is being presented regarding proposed trail, especially the movement through Norton Park. You're looking at a screen, I remember when they had the meeting, was it last year? Where they actually had it on the board, and they were going through, and some of the things, be honest with Louis being Louis, some of it perplexed me. And it would be more than me trying to enter something into the computer, which I'll mess up anyway, but another example. Another one, too, is also, I like to not only hear, but see the reaction I get when questioning a particular item face-to-face, such as items preparing to finance a said project. When we're talking this kind of money, all right, and not being that, totally knowing exactly what's going on, I like to present the question directly, not play with my computer because I don't understand. And if I may, with your permission, finish?
Mm-hmm.
Finally, in fact, this, finally, a formal meeting tells, shows that the town government, meaning the Town Council, that all methods are in place to answer any and all questions residents may have regarding the project, computer savvy or not. And that's why we need people like yourselves. At least, I'll speak for myself.
Sure.
And thank you for the effort.
It is my understanding that it was the Department of Transportation that determined the venue and the format. It wasn't the Town Council?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, just, I didn't want that to be misconstrued, that we preferred to have that format.
I'm sorry. The Town Manager explained that to me at the last meeting.
Yep, okay.
I understand that, but I'm saying, is this going to be the norm for how many more meetings?
You know, it's hard to say. I don't know when the state is going to start resuming these in-person presentations. It's certainly not in our purview to be able to tell them, well, we can't do this or that. So, I don't know when the state will be doing that. Do you have any idea about that?
I do not.
Mr. Lee?
I do not.
Yeah, it's kind of in their hands now.
Exactly to your point, if I was to say, I'm trying to say this respectfully. Yes, the town, the state government is talking to the town. I understand that. But this is town property.
Right.
And I think somewhere along the line, we get to say something, too, respectfully, not challenge.
It has been reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and they're in favor of it, so it isn't just.
I'm sorry, sir.
The Parks and Rec Advisory Board has looked at the plan, and they've endorsed it. So, they're the ones who are, you know, make recommendations with regards to the parks, specifically Norton Park. So, it has been reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
All right. But does that, what does that mean to perhaps having actual meetings?
I'm just saying, it's been reviewed, it wasn't just reviewed by the Town Council and Town Staff, it's been reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory.
I'm not, believe me, sir, I'm not challenging the procedure. I'm not challenging the procedure.
No, I'm just pointing out that who else has reviewed it as well?
No, and I understand.
And if you would like to speak to the project manager, I can give you his phone number, I'll talk to you directly, and he'll answer, he'll answer your questions as well.
No, what I'd rather do is exactly what I'm doing here. I'm talking to my town government.
All right.
I don't have to go mono-mono with anyone. I have a town government that's been elected, and I present it to them, and then I put it in their hands, and it goes from there. If it works, and they say, gee, Louis may have a point here, fine and dandy. If the Town Council or whatever decides, no, he does not have a point here, and this is the way we have to go, even though it's Plainville's land, then I just sit back at the, under the room and listen. And thank you, and I mean this all in respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? I don't see anybody else in there other than Rob Budin. You want to have a go? No? You're all set? Okay, if there are no others that wish to speak to the council, I will, at this time, close the public comment section, moving through our agenda. We do not have any old business listed. We do have a number of items for new business, so we will, we will get to the new business items.
Madam Chair?
Go right ahead.
Motion to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfers for Fiscal Year Ending, June 30, 2021.
Second in motion.
I have a motion and a second, and a discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appropriate $135,000 from account 0100032110-0000 unassigned fund balance to account 0102015114000 police overtime.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax auction list as recommended with the exclusion of number 12 at 105 New Britain Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I have, I'm going to have to abstain from this vote. I have a family member on that list, and I feel it's best that I just recuse myself from that conversation.
Okay, we will note that in a minute. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair?
Rosemary?
Yeah. Motion to rename the Library Youth Services Room to the Elizabeth Betty Bokus Youth Services Room.
Second in motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number five?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That takes care of all of our items under new business. Do we have any other discussions of interest at this time?
Just one item is, with regards to the Farming Canal Heritage Trail, the cost of Phase One is in the millions of dollars, not in the $400,000. It's probably somewhere around $3.5, $4 million. 100% of it is committed by the state of Connecticut. If there's any overages, the state will make up those overages, so that, hopefully, that answers the question that was raised during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add here? Okay, so, taking here that item number 13, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter and a land acquisition matter.
Second in motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will probably not come out for any action or?
Not anticipating any.
Probably not. Okay, thank you very much.